An open discussion, but my thought was we start with ours and go through it. At least down to where it, you know, starts with zone one.
Okay.
As we compare it to Ria Dosa, and there's not much in Ria Dosa.
You have Scott here now too. Scott, do you have a copy of, you have Rua Dosa, do you have ours?
No.
Okay, because we're gonna like work from ours and pull from theirs. Does that make sense?
Alright, sounds good.
Do you need a pen? Oh, you forgot. Okay, sorry Mike.
Morning Mike.
Hey Scott. Okay, well.
So, so.
Okay, let's just be clear. There is the quote official nine dot seven dot thirteen fuel modification that's on the Angel Fire website under ordinance. Now, there was a copy that I passed out at the last meeting that was some wordsmithing and changes that Martha had made even last year. I'm looking at the official one off the website.
Oh, okay. Well, I, I don't have the official one, but I have the
Yeah.
The modified one. The official one, remember?
I've got both of them here frankly, and.
Really, really was upset, not upset, but adamant about the fact that the wording in there promised, if you did these things, they could save your house. So, thing on the, on the wordsmith one that I did after asking for everybody's opinion, uh, was to change it to.
Okay.
We could minimize the damage to your property, but.
Okay, well, I don't care. I mean.
Nobody can come in and save your house. A fire is a fire. It's a monster. He does what he wants to do most of the time.
Well, I've got them both, so we can look at yours. And if there's anything, you know, I've got the, uh, that original, so.
Okay.
Looking at page one of the, page one of the modified is really pretty much the same. I don't know that you modified it a lot.
No.
Yeah, grant, down to ground fuels, which I'm good with that. If we can turn the page and then it goes to lateral few ladder fuels, which is the same. Down through, uh, intermix. Now, you added an item eleven after the official one ended at ten.
I did?
Yeah, somehow I got an item eleven in yours.
What is eleven, Mike?
It says treatment, treatment includes limbing, lopping, and pruning or cutting. Specific treatments will be determined by the Angel Fire Chief of, Angel Fire Chief of Fire slash EMS or his her designee on a case by case basis and upon request. Parenthesis or two ten dash oh five comma four dash twenty two ten. Maybe, maybe, uh, you know, Bobby added that. I don't know. But it's, it's in yours. Do you see yours? Is it in yours?
Let me ask you this.
Would you read that again, Mike?
It says item number eleven, treatment code.
In here?
No one sees that one, huh?
Oh, I see it. Okay, I got it, I got it.
That's in yours.
Okay, I don't know why this sounds different. Alright, got it.
Okay, and then it, and then I like the fact that you added requirements and recommendations, which the original did not. It just starts with item A. Okay.
Yeah.
You made item A, or you just said general, so that's okay. Um, and it's basically speaks to a zone range from zero to one hundred plus feet. And have mandatory requirements and recommendations listed in table one below with the following parameters. Uh, so I guess that, okay, you moved treatment from theirs up to number eleven, it looks like. Okay, that's fine.
Alright.
Now, where the bullets, which you know, this is, I don't know if, if how important this is from a official document standpoint, but I, I like the outline approach where you can refer to item, you know, A one, you know, B two, and so forth. Does anybody like that better than the, what we see here with bullets?
Um, you know, the, the second one I have, I don't know why I have two different ones, but yeah, I did an A and a B.
Okay, I'm not seeing that. Maybe I don't have your latest. I don't know. I see general without a, a number on it or requirements. And then there's bullets, ground and lateral fuels with specifics. My, my suggestion, this, I mean, and this is from a documentation and referring to items in here. Maybe we start with requirements and recommendations as maybe we say purpose is Roman numeral one. Definitions Roman numeral two, so you got one, two, three, four. And then requirements and definitions, Roman numeral three.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Uh, I think.
Well.
You're getting, I mean, look at Rua Dosa. It's still clear. And we don't need a lot of Roman numerals in them.
Well, they've got item A, item one, and then A, B, C, D. So, again, that's the same concept that I'm talking about. However, we do it. I mean, it's just a format.
Formatting is, I, I understand we need to think about formatting, understand that, but I really think content is going to be ought to be.
Okay, well, okay, well, I'm, I'm looking at requirements and recommendations in general, which
Okay.
And then there's all these bullets, which again, to me ought to be numbered, but that's just me. Okay.
Well, I, you know, I, I think I have a gift. I have a whole gift and, uh.
Is this like the Ria Dosa?
Uh.
We're looking at the Angel.
Okay, okay. So.
And I think you might have.
I have the one that was passed out at the July second meeting.
Yeah, that's the one I.
Yeah, that's the one I'm looking at.
Okay. Okay.
Um, let me just, okay, requirements and recommendations. There is a weakness in, in our old one and our new one in that it assumes, and I've read it through many times, that every structure is to be included. Single family homes, you know, duplexes, condos, townhouses. We gotta think about, and this is just very high level point. In this first phase, if we call them phased in, do we want to include the condos and townhouses, which if you've ever been up in that area, most of it is not compliant because of all the trees that were planted or left when they built those way back in the seventies and eighties, or whatever it was. Do we want to require all of those trees within ten feet to be cut down? They're big trees.
If we don't need something, we're not gonna be.
Big trees, twenty plus inch DBH are not considered a fire hazard. As long as limbs, it's their D limb to a certain point to where the limbs aren't coming close to the building, correct?
Well, and, and that's.
Well, the zero, yeah, the zero to ten feet requirement, which we haven't even started talking about says minimum of ten to twelve inch di, uh, foot between stems of trees less than twelve inches. Well, I'm talking about the big guys that are gonna have limbs going out over the structure.
Exactly, and that's where de-limming might be appropriate, instead of removing the twenty plus inch DBH, you know, trees.
Yes, yes, and it does specify that, at least in the Rua Dosa one, that it needs to be de-limbed above.
Twenty-five feet.
Yeah.
Which is higher, each zone required, as you get closer to structure, requires a higher de-limming. And I, I'm assuming there are so many trees that have close proximity to those wooden structures that de-limming is gonna be in order. And most of them are pretty big.
Yeah, you, you can't just cut them all down. You should be, I think.
Yeah, I, I think in general, uh, uh, my guess is that the bigger trees will be left and, and they'll be trimmed according to the Fire Chief's, uh, you know, what, what he means necessary. Um, what do you think, Mike?
So, let's just take, you know, an example, condos. You got a big tree that's been there a long time. It's within that first ten foot uh, parameter. You gotta limit up from the bottom, so it won't, you know, the, it's kind of like lateral ladder fuels. You know, you don't want ground fire to, to go up the tree and then crown out, right? So, so the code says you gotta clean up the, the lower branches up to what feet?
I, I think it said fifteen, the Ria Dosa, I didn't have the Angel Fire ones, but.
I said here on the, whatever page, the prune trees extending over eve of roof, ten feet.
So, those near condos, still, they have to be a certain, uh, distance above the roof. And none of them, none of the branches close to the building are de-limbed up. Up, yeah, yep.
So, let's say you, you prune it up fifteen feet from the ground. That's what, that's prune all species at least fifteen feet above the ground. So, you got this big, big ponderosa. Their limbs stretch, stretch out over the roof of the condo. What are you gonna do? Anything?
Ten feet above the roof, the branches have to be eliminated.
Ten feet above the roof. So, if you got a big fifty foot ponderosa, you're gonna cut it from the top down to only ten feet? It's gonna kill it, right?
No, you can de-limb a tree and not kill it.
Okay. Now, I'm just playing the devil's advocate here. I, you know.
I know, I hear you. But, right, I think we can't have branches near the building, but the stem of the tree is not the fire danger. It's the branches.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you want to keep as best you can at out of the fire out of the canopy. So, by trimming the bottom, that, that helps prevent that unless, you know, there's no way we can prevent the firestorm, you know, probably.
Well, yeah, we're, our, our goal is to, uh, drop the, drop a crown fire before it even gets to that.
Yes. So, I, I mean, I'm okay with, somebody just explain it to me one more time. See, if you got a fifty foot ponderosa, it's a two-story condo that goes up thirty feet. I don't know if they do or not. So, fifteen feet from the ground, that's, that's easy. And so, you're gonna cut the top ten feet out of that ponderosa?
No, you're gonna.
Up, uh, ten feet above the eve, the roof. So, ten feet up, there's still branches up there.
Yeah.
But, but you just cut more branches. You cut the branches up ten feet above the roof.
So, you've done them, you don't completely knock the top ten feet out, is what?
No, 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 no.
No, no, just no branches within ten feet of the building anywhere.
Well, a big ponderosa, and you, you know, there's a lot of them that extend way out, you know, above the, the roof.
That's what I mean.
Well, the problem is gonna be, you shouldn't take more than twenty-five percent of the total height off.
We're not looking to knock the top off.
No, but we're talking, you, you, when you start, you've got a, let's say, you've got a forty foot tree. Then you can safely, without damaging the tree, take the first twenty-five percent of that, which is ten feet off.
Well, and, and if it can't be done safely, then the tree needs to be removed.
That's right. If you're gonna have to take, if it's a, if it's a, as you said, a forty foot tree next to a thirty foot building, um, the tree will not survive if you de-limb it to just the upper ten feet.
Okay, I've never heard that before, but, but a horticulturist or something, or arborist would know.
Yeah, we have trees at our house that are well beyond that trimmed up, and we're doing okay, but.
But these twenty inch trees are usually more than fifty feet high.
Yeah, I know, they're big guys.
And those are the ones that we're trying to allow them to keep. If they're less than twenty inches, then they're subject to be removed.
Right.
If they can't be trimmed properly.
Like days.
Yeah.
So, you say keep the wording just the way it is? We don't need to further clarify that?
I haven't read it.
Yeah, yeah, I, we do need to, we do need to clarify that. Um, we do need to clarify that, and I wish I could show you this one where, what I did, Mike, was I looked at Rua Dosa and I went to our latest edition, and I clarified some of this so that it's a little clearer, you know. I think we do need to be clear about, people can't just make up their own mind. We need to say, you know, how to prune it, how far to prune it, and what's, what's of value and what's of not. So, just what Scott said. If we can, and day, if we can do it safely, without damaging the tree, it stays. If we can take it up ten feet, ten feet above, otherwise it has to go.
Okay, so ten feet above, you're saying trim the limbs up ten feet even above the, uh, the ground, fifteen feet.
The roof.
The roof, so. So, if, if ten feet above the roof, okay.
And we need to say that very.
Limbs that extend, so there could be some limbs that extend out.
Over the, over the roof.
You're, you're gonna trim them back to ten feet if it extends over the roof. So, ten feet from the edge of the roof?
I, Mike, go up the trunk, climb up the trunk.
Yeah.
I climb, climb. You reach the roof, and then you take your saw, and you're climbing, and you go ten more feet.
Yeah.
Remove the branches.
Plop off those branches as you go up ten more feet above the roof. Yes, there will be other limbs extending out above that, but the key is it's unlikely you're going to get a fire up there because you've already cleared out the small trees, the ladder fuels, everything else has been cleared out. So, it's unlikely that tree is gonna burn. It's unlikely, because you've done everything else.
Yeah.
What?
You're not gonna.
Well.
If there's a crown fire coming through the village and it reaches these large trees, they're gonna go. So.
Well, so is the whole, everything.
But so will the buildings.
Yeah.
And I don't think the tree is gonna make or break the building. These are all wood buildings.
And it's everything before the tree. I mean, what did you do, what did you do twenty feet out? What did you do sixty feet out? And how many small trees did you take down? We can't possibly, just like Jake Crane said, we can't possibly take every tree.
No.
Right.
Would it be helpful? Yeah, would it be helpful? I mean, I'm a, you know, if there, there was, you know, a page of examples, and this is the hardest one to interpret in my mind. Uh, you know, like with a picture of a structure, a tree so many feet within that ten feet range, it goes up. And, uh, this is, you know, this meets the requirements. This one doesn't meet the requirements.
Yeah, an illustration would be very helpful to help people understand.
That's the toughest one to understand, in my mind.
And then, you know, the Rua Dosa, the Rua Dosa one, they have illustrations showing if, if you have several of those large trees next to a condo, they should be separated quite a bit. I mean, they do great with the, the illustrations. I, I really like what they've done.
I have to look at their illustration.
Really good. So, I mean, we could add, I mean, they do everything. They have these uphill, downhill. I mean, I can see, like, the council loves this.
I don't remember much about condos, though, big condo buildings in there, in Ria Dosa.
No, I didn't. And when we went there, I, I had it on my list to ask, but I never did. Maybe we need to ask them, you know, Dick Cook, you know, how do they, they, is this all inclusive, or do they have any examples of larger two-story condos with trees around them? I don't know.
Because we're just talking.
I've never been there, so I don't know. Uh, I'm assuming they have them.
Yeah. Well, okay, so I mean, that, to me, as I get into this, that's the one that I have the hardest time kind of visualizing. And our goal is to make it as clear as possible.
Yeah.
Um, yes.
So, anything else in this zero to ten foot, you know, requirements piece, other than that one item? Firewood?
That's easy. Does any, does anyone have a fire resistant blanket?
Yeah.
To put over firewood?
Get them on the name.
We need to put that in ours. Um, if someone's going to have firewood close to the house, even.
That's allowed. Maybe a footnote or something? Yeah.
They're, uh, yeah.
I like that, too, in the Ria Dosa one.
In color, they look like the blue tarp's, but they're white and, uh.
And they're fire resistant.
The key is, is that you have to wrap it completely, because if you allow embers in an opening, you're still gonna burn under that blanket.
I mean, there's, I don't know what you think, but there's a huge issue with large wooden decks. That it, this is susceptible is firewood, you know?
It is.
We don't say anything about that, or we're not gonna tell people.
Needles. With a pile of needles on the deck.
Yeah.
Uh, that, there's the, there's the fuel to, to get the words started.
Well, but we say clean off decks, clean off, get rid of fire, uh, uh, pine needles.
Right.
So, that's covered. I think we'll go down this thing from top to bottom rather than jumping around.
I agree.
Which one do you want to start with? Well, we're on the hours are present.
So, we're in this zero to ten range under requirements, right?
And, and yeah, and he started out under where we skip definitions. We agree the definition's okay.
Okay, so the, the requirements under general applies to everything from zero to one hundred feet. Which is fine, and then it jumps into the zones after general. So, is everything under the general okay without addition of anything from Ria Dosa?
Okay, well, did we, did we finish requirement and recommendation?
There's a general that applies to zero to one hundred. All this stuff is everything.
Okay, I, I have a problem with vacant lot requirements. I, I think we need to remove down at the bottom the trees that are twelve inch DBH are recommended to remove from vacant lots, allow fifteen foot spacing. If you buy a vacant lot, I would like to see it cleaned up, all the dead down, uh, taken off of it and trimmed, the trees trimmed up. We say six feet. If you want to go higher than that, that's no problem. But if I buy a vacant lot, I don't want to move in there and cut down a, a bunch of trees if I'm gonna build on it, because I don't know what trees I want when I build.
So, what do you read your, that vacant lot requirements? Read what you would change. Vacant lots, comma, a lot with blah, blah, blah. How would you change that paragraph?
I would go down to the bottom and take out trees that are twelve DBH.
Less than twelve?
Seven, twelve, right, less than. And that whole next, all those ne, uh, following sentences.
If you remove that, there's nothing to be removed, though.
I mean.
The only, the only thing you want to remove from the lot is the dead and down, the slash, the ladder fuel, the ladder fuel.
I guess I, I seriously disagree with that. I think we've got to remove the small diameter trees. As a ground fire comes up, the small diameter trees have limbs that, you know, are gonna be closer to the ground, and if you get the small diameter trees going, they're gonna get up into the, uh, the crown of the larger trees.
Well, we're practically speaking, you're never gonna get all the trees cleared and cut down. If, if you follow this and then follow some of the other items down here, you're looking at removing millions of trees.
Right.
That's not practical.
We're talking about lots of.
Well, well, it's fifteen foot spacing, so you could have a small diameter tree as long as they're fifteen feet away from another small diameter tree. Now, maybe that fifteen feet is too far. I don't, you know, but I, I, it's my opinion, and you know, it's just mine, that I've been in fires, you know, you get this.
If you drop.
Yellowstone had so many of those lodgepole pines, you know, that had never been cut. And that's the reason that whole forest burned up is the small diameter trees that were.
And it's small. We're mostly talking about these, uh, pine, uh, forests in the village where there's a, just they're very tightly grouped, uh, pines in, in lots that they're very small and they never will get very big.
No.
Because they're so close together.
And they got meditation on them.
Yeah, they're just too much. That, but I mean, the pines are even worse.
They're hard.
Ponderosas are, yes.
Yeah, and, and anyway, the, um.
I wouldn't take it out, Don.
What?
Sorry. I wouldn't take that out.
I wouldn't either. The ma, the variable is the fifteen foot spacing is, is that?
You're not, you're not people to cut trees like that.
Fifteen foot spacing, though, allows them to still have a lot of trees on there.
That's a million, that's taking a million.
Oh, oh, we're talking tens of millions of trees.
We're talking about years and years and years.
Yes. Well, this is a big project.
Okay, thirty years, these, some of these little, a lot of these little trees are gonna die. For instance, I'm, I've got an acre lot. I have just taken all the little dead trees down. There were about ten of them. And when I, when I say small, they're twelve inches at the base. And that's what I, every Saturday, I hear chainsaws operating all around me.
But not enough. But not nearly enough.
Twenty, and just for clarification, twenty at diameter at DBH is what that means. So, that's basically a twenty-one inch circumference.
Circumference, it's all diameters.
It's all diameter.
But you measure it.
Circumference is.
No.
Pi times d.
Right.
No, it's a diameter.
You divide the circumference by three point one five one five.
Well, you measure the diameter at breast height. That's.
In my opinion, if we concentrate on dead down and trimming the trees up, if we concentrate on that right now, and we can get that done, we've achieved an all clear lot.
Yes, but we're, we're.
I won't argue with that.
We're making this for the long term. We're not, we're, we're just making this for the long term. We're not trying to make this for tomorrow.
And the recommendation, people are gonna look at that, and as we accomplish one phase of it. as we accomplish one phase of it, then we move recommendation over into requirement. But number one, let's let's concentrate
It is under.
On the worst thing we've got going at this point in time.
It is.
I don't see in the Ria Dosa, they don't address this in the Ria Dosa unless I just missed it.
Um, in the Ria Dosa, they.
In the, you know, lots with no structure.
Yeah, there is something in there.
I just can't find it. I'm looking again and again.
Because it it even goes into lots with no structure, but their lot is close to a within a hundred feet of a neighbor's.
Okay, this is four.
They still have to comply with the ordinance, even though there's no structure on their lot. But their lot is within a hundred feet of another.
Okay, it's item four. I found it. Item four on page three.
Well, we have to, we have to start somewhere, though.
I know, but we.
And and we're not saying we're gonna adopt the whole thing, that we're just taking bits and what.
I agree with that.
If you don't have that in there, I mean, the uh Simiron Watershed Alliance with their ten million dollar thinning grant, most of the lots, you know, uh aren't, don't have structures in the risk areas. Going up the side of the hill, it's gonna result in, you know, fires up in the canopy. And if you don't, I mean, what are they gonna go? They're gonna skip all those in their thinning efforts? I don't think so.
I agree, Mike.
Well, now you can't compare our setup with what's gonna happen when they bring that clearing project in.
Did we lose you, Mike?
Okay, can you hear me now?
No, I can't. I think we lost you for a minute.
I think I turned my phone off, but anyway. Well, I I guess there's a valid concern about phases, but I tell you, if we don't address uh open lots, you know, we're making a big mistake. That's just my opinion.
I I agree. We have, I I think they are all lots with or without structures all have to abide by the same rules. And then lots with with structures have to abide by the within, I don't know, the zones, right? And uh, yeah, just and and then if if the village council and uh wants to phase it in uh and take a a gradual approach at it, they could do that.
Well, I could hear, I can hear someone saying if we did that a resident that sets right in the middle of, you know, this thick, you know, um, small diameter trees all around them, they thin their lot. What value is that in terms of preventing, you know?
Exactly.
As fire that comes.
If none of their neighbors did, right?
Um, and that's what I I've heard that before is like, what, why should I do this if if Joe Blow that owns this lot that's never been built on, you know, needs to be thin and he doesn't, he's not required to do it?
Well, see, our goal, according to Jake Crane in the council, is simply right now to reach as many people in a voluntary manner as possible. And just like Dave said earlier, this is a twenty-year thing. We're not even gonna be here in twenty years. But we, what we have to do is is just start somewhere. That's all we're doing. We're not trying to right now come up with something that is immediately gonna be put into play. It's gonna be a very slow start. We're gonna first get everybody who wants to do it. And later, you know, like we'll go as far as Rudeo so does, which is clean and lean. And eventually take them, take those properties, but that's way down the line.
And part of this is the window of when the compliance has to be, you know, in the original documents, the first year, if you've got one acre or less. And then it extends on out. Um, and that needs to be reset, you know, obviously, with whenever this new document's drafted. So if you've got a five acre lot, you know, how long do you have to thin your lot? Um, even if it's unstructured, you know, you got what, two, three years? What is it?
I think so.
You got five years.
Five years, you know? And and what I understand, having spoken to several firefighters, is they're going to protect the homes that have made the effort. It's they cannot waste their time. They can, and that's something we can communicate, but firefighters cannot protect your home if you're covered up with small diameter trees and you haven't done anything.
Well, the uh people from California at the time of the um Calf Canyon and Herman's Peak Fire were marking houses to uh to save and um.
And once not.
And and basically, if you if you weren't marked, I think it was a pink with a pink ribbon.
Yeah.
Um, they would go by you because they can't risk lives.
Wasting time on them.
Yeah.
Now, another, just uh um uh it going back to uh this gentleman's, I'm sorry, Don, uh your your name. Um, it, the current requirement, it says that that paragraph that he brought up, it's in parentheses, and it says it is recommended to remove trees from vacant lots. It's it doesn't say it's a requirement.
Okay, I'm trying to find that.
The fuel rec.
It is under vacant lot requirements. Uh.
It's the one that Don was talking about? It is recommended, not required.
Wait, 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 wait. Where are you reading? I'm I'm sorry. I'm looking at the uh modified version that that uh.
I have two versions.
Which is really the same thing and we're comparing word to word.
It's under definitions and then it, oh, well, no, I'm I'm sorry. It's under ordinance requirements and recommendations. There's general, and then the next section is vacant lot requirements.
General then vacant lot requirements, yes.
Right, so last s- last uh sentence in, uh, well, two sentences.
Oh, I see what you're saying. That that was in the uh in the current official document. Yes, I see that.
It's in parentheses, it is recommended. It's not, it doesn't say it's a require.
But that's how we can help Don feel better.
Yeah, I mean.
That gives people an idea of what the recommended treatment is.
Yeah.
I think the recommended treatment is inadequate, in my opinion. I think it needs to be required. Now, you can change that spacing requirement that makes it less severe than fifteen feet if you wanted to. But to me, I mean, I'm just going off of what I've seen in, you know, those, you get a fire coming through with those small diameter trees, they all go up.
I agree.
And then they go up to the crown, just take everything up. You gotta get the small diameter trees out. You have to.
Now, you know, should it be ten feet spacing? How much difference would that really make? I don't know.
Well, ten foot spacing, that means the branches are definitely touching each other.
It would be, yes.
One to do another.
Right, and that is, I I would leave it, but again, I you got some big ones in there that are greater than twelve, they're gonna extend over the small ones, you know? Also, in maybe, maybe that needs to be addressed if it's greater than where it says three snags, it only addressed snags, it doesn't address greater than twelve uh twelve inch diameter, does it?
Well, you know, we're not all gonna, we're not gonna agree on everything. I'm just taking some notes here and I'm recording this, and I'm gonna write down and send out a version where we still aren't maybe in agreement, but.
So you could put this kind of like the other, you know, point we talked about with the condos and the tall trees, but
Yes.
This is a a re- a huge variable that we need to decide on, you know?
Yes, that we, and today we're we're not voting or deciding on anything definite. We're just trying to get some things on the table. So I I don't want us to spend all day on one or two things. I will make these, I'll put these ones that where we still have some controversy in red and we will we will dig down and eventually have vote on it because, you know, we can't just let one person decide everything. We have to be, we have to have a quorum when we finally decide on this.
Yeah, that's a, that's a big one, since there's so many in the high-risk zone that are un-unbuilt-ons going up the side, they'll never be built on. Some of these on the side of, you know, steep hills, they'll never be built-ons. And that's where the fire runs from the bottom to the top.
Pileings.
The treehouse.
Yeah, I know. They get, if they have a view, somebody's gonna build on it.
But you know, guys, I don't think we should just over-focus on one and then the next.
Sure.
I think we should air our opinions, let me highlight it, let me come back with a revised version with what you all are saying. I'm recording every single word. I go back and make sure that 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 our next meeting, we can actually have some votes on these things and get it down. Mike, does that sound okay? No, maybe? Guess not? We overdo every single cause I I don't know about you, but I don't have.
I haven't had a chance to even read this from Angel Fire. What are current? I just read the one for Ria Dosa.
Yeah, and that's.
Even late later this afternoon.
That's always really amazing.
It's very thorough. There's some things in there.
That we should, you you know, and that's where Jake wanted us to concentrate our time, not really on ours, but on the others.
Well, should we?
Well, let's go to Ria Dosa and it all powers. Should we follow their guidelines?
Yeah.
They've been pretty successful.
They've been very successful and Jake said, I mean, he said, I have it on my recording, Jake said the council likes this and would almost like to just take it if it's legal, take the Rudeo so Rudeo so one and just use it.
Yeah, no, there's a, there's a few minor changes, but.
I think we ought to be focusing there, deciding what on that we want to keep and applies to Angel Fire and what on the Rudeo so one does not apply to us and we do not want.
Yeah.
Uh, that's where the council.
By the way, this Ria Dosa came up before the village about ten years ago. And um, the guy that was city man had been uh what's his name?
He he he, he used to a lot for this one.
And and village uh administration at that time turned it down.
Okay. A question, somebody said something about.
At this one that we're looking at, they had it in place and they did not accept the Ria Dosa.
Yes.
Can can we go through the Rudeo so one?
Okay.
And and see what we would like to have, then I can
Thank you.
Use some red and blue and send it out. And I I just feel like we're spinning our wheels and who wants to recreate something that's already amazing? But I mean.
My guess is Rick Smith, you know, with the grannies got is looking at this old guideline in letting contracts. And if not, fine, but you know, what standard is he using to hire contractors? And that process is going on as we speak, I think, but.
No, he hasn't started yet because he's waiting until he gets the.
But getting bids, he's get, I would think he's getting bids or contracts.
He told us at the meeting that they can't do anything until they have money in hand.
No, I know, I know that. I know that. They can't let the contracts, but they can have the contracts. Hi, good morning. Important.
Guys, can we, can we look at Rudeo so? Yeah, start with Rudeo so at the top. What do we not, what does not apply to Angel Fire and what do we really like? Can we do that or?
Could somebody please email me that document? To Brian Lindsay? Please?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, do I have your?
Yes.
Do I have your email?
Yes, ma'am. B Lindsay three eight.
And let me open up, let me concentrate.
It's on the the.
Yeah, first I have to get online.
Okay, excuse me. Well, and I don't mean right now. I just mean in the future second. Yeah, just just, no, 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 not right now. I I understand. Just in the future, where I could see that. So are we at the table one under the?
We're we're on the first page of the Rudeo so.
Oh, page three of the Ria Dosa, okay.
Now, page one of Ria Dosa, there's nine pages. Fuel management standards is where it starts.
I like a lot of the stuff that we don't have in ours and in theirs, frankly.
All right, let's start with the first first paragraph. Because I don't disagree with the first paragraph.
Okay, um.
It's taking all trees off your lot and leaving dirty trees.
Right, wait, can we stop for just a minute so I can send this to Brian? It's B.
B Lindsay three eight at hotmail dot com.
B Lindsay three eight at hotmail dot com, and I'm going to attach the Rudeo so.
The new fire station is gonna go
Your ordinance. Hey, here it comes.
See.
Okay, there's no subject. I just sent it attached. Should be there someday.
Let me refresh here. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, I think we're ready to start with Emerson.
I I don't see it yet, but um.
There's no subject. I have sent it. It takes a while to get up to the satellite background.
Oh, here it is. I have it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Um, just as a comment, one thing I like about the Ria Dosa approach is they discuss zones and in very good detail what is appropriate. And you know, you 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 have to remember, you know, their zone one is zero to ten feet. Um, at zero to ten feet, the house I used to have, um, there was nothing.
Exactly.
I mean, that that's a good point. I mean, it's kind of like it's bare zone almost.
There's nothing.
Right.
Um, you know, nothing flammable by the time you get out to ten feet, um, you know.
Now, are you looking at this?
Yes.
Page one?
Yes, looking at page one of nine.
Okay.
Is what it.
And zone one is the first thing. And the first thing on zone one is remove all non com- uh decomposing pine needles, et cetera. Well, we do that in ours.
We have two feet. In ours, it says the first two feet of pine are pine needles. There's this ten foot.
No, and I agree with Ria Dosa. The only issue I have with letter A is the very end of it and placed appropriately for village removal. You know, that that needs to be crossed out. Um, you know, that we're not gonna have the village removing needles.
Good point.
To be raked and disposed of properly.
Uh, pine needles are to be rake and placed and disposed of properly.
Yeah.
And it's. Bones of property. Okay, got it.
Good summer job for high school students.
And ours says that already.
Well, uh.
We're not.
But yeah, okay.
There are things in Ridaosa that we have already. So we shouldn't concentrate on those.
Look, let's just go through Ridaosa like Jake.
Okay, go to the next.
Please.
I mean, what is that? I, this is a term I, I don't understand. It says. Flammable ground materials and activity slash, activity, what is an activity slash?
Where are you? Where are you?
Where are you in the document?
Under items, zone one, item one. Item A, remove all non-decomposing pine needles, flammable ground materials and activity slash.
I don't know what activity slash.
Well, I would assume. I would assume that all dead slash. Laying on the ground is activity slash limbs fall off of the trees. That's slash.
Okay, I mean.
Can we use a different word other than activity?
Ground, ground slash, I mean.
Yeah, flammable ground material.
I'm gonna put a line through that, okay? I'll send this out to you guys.
Just flammable ground materials.
Yes.
Including pine needles are to be raked.
And how do you know if they're? Non-decomposing, decomposing pine needles.
I mean, yeah, I mean, that's a huge question.
All pine needles.
I agree. That, what needs to be bare earth or.
Decomposing.
Pavers or, you know, something non-flammable.
All non, remove all pine needles and flammable ground material.
Yeah.
Well, look at, or how about remove all pine needles, flammable ground materials and slash? Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Got it. I got it. Okay, can we move on now?
Alright, no, let's go back to ours about pine needles.
We're not doing.
We're not.
But we've already got.
I, we understand that. We're just looking at, at taking this document and then making it work for us.
Pedro's there is ten feet versus two feet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to get back to the first paragraph in the Ridaosa. Which says. That you will remove all trees and end up with forty trees per acre.
That's a, that's just an idea of, uh, if you had fourteen inch diameter trees. If all of them, you'd have approximately forty would accomplish that basal area.
It's just an example.
Okay. There's proceed.
Okay, alright, moving down to B.
That looks good to me.
Alright, C.
Yeah, and then with their C looks good with their chart.
They have a wonderful drawing there, okay?
Anybody have any issues of that?
Well.
Well, I have an issue with trying to cut down enough trees. Where the crown doesn't touch.
Well, I, I think it ba- it, it comes down to the. We're no longer gonna be able to live in a thick dense forest. We all have to. Just take that to heart that. Those days are over. We have to open up the forest to be able to be, to be more safe.
In the next ten years, you wanna cut down a million trees.
Yes, sir. Exactly. We need to cut down a million trees. Because that's the point. And then around the houses, it's not about the canopy touching. It's about making discontinuity between groups. Like they're saying here, your house is fuel. And any trees around your house are also considered fuel. But if you have, if you can disconnect those from the existing forest stand, so you can have a couple of trees around your house, the insurance. Is the one that wants to see a lot of this done, ten to thirty feet from the structure. But if you, you can leave your trees, but you, it's not about ten feet between trees, but. You can have groups of trees.
Yes.
Have open spaces between those trees where, where there's not connectivity. But it's not a very, it's, it's very abstract. It's not a very straightforward mathematical. We're, we're just gonna cut ten feet between each tree. Because some canopies are bigger this and that. So it's, it's more of an abstract kind of. Um. Direction towards it, but yes, I mean, Scott's exactly right. We, we can't be living in the dark forest. We need. To open up around the homes. We need to open up around the neighborhoods. We need to open up the roads and the corridors. And we're still gonna have a million trees after we cut one million trees. There, there are more trees on the earth than there are stars in the Milky Way. We need to.
Doesn't say anything, doesn't say anything about conifers that touch.
Have groups of trees.
Well, and the other thing is, remember. When I read this the first time, I thought, ooh, this is severe, but this is zone one.
Yes.
You need to, we need to emphasize to people, this is zone one. Zone one, zero to ten feet, most of us would have almost nothing there. Maybe grass, but not much.
Yes.
No, I'm good with the, the whole thing and the, the only new stuff, uh, in this is. Is the, uh, fire retardant covers. Um, you know, that's a new concept to the Angel Fire area. They do exist. You can buy them on Amazon. It's like a blue tart, but it's white in color. Um, but you know, the whatever flammable. Uh, material you're covering, whether it's a woodpile or, or construction material. It's gotta be completely covered. It can't have openings where embers can get in under the blanket. Um. That's, that's the only, uh. Quirk to, that's letter I and J.
And that's still zone one.
Exactly. That's still zone one, but they don't want fires starting next to the building within ten feet.
Well, and they don't want if the building burns. For the building to ignite the forest.
Exactly right. I agree.
It goes both ways and, or a firebrand falling from the sky and landing on a woodpile. Igniting the structure. But yes, Dave, it goes both ways. That's correct.
So I, I don't know if we wanna keep the fire retardant cover part in there. Uh, we have a lot of education to do to our homeowners that those blankets exist, that they can buy them. Uh, I, anyway, uh, anybody else's thought on that?
Well, I would.
Well, anybody else have anything on page one?
Well, this is something that is gonna be heartburn for a lot of people is their item F. Uh, define an ornamental spruce or other kind of, you know, smaller trees that grow from the ground up. There's a lot of people that planted those little things, you know, right in front, like they do a city house. And now they're big. And, you know. So I like it, but it's gonna be heartburn if you have, you know, these blue spruce that are very pretty and.
In Ridaosa, they do, um, they do allow. Um, the homeowners. To keep. Some favorite trees. I mean, they're not just hard asses about it.
Yeah, but you're right though, Mike. It, it is a risk though.
So maybe they move them. You, you could hire someone to move a small tree.
Oh, that can't be trimmed to the structure eve. So they're saying if you can't top it before it gets taller than the house. You're saying the ones that have grown bigger than the house is.
Yeah.
That is gonna be tough. And those would probably be your twenty DBH, which would require a permit. If they're that old possibly.
Okay.
But yes, that's interesting. Can't be trimmed to structure eve.
I'm okay with the rest of the items and, uh, that page one, ten, zero to ten feet.
So what should we do about F?
You know, that can be, that, that could be put on the inspector that gives, uh, the. The inspection and, and, uh, you know, a, a tree right next to the house, but then it's gravel out fifty feet from there. Maybe that one tree next near the house is okay because there's nothing beyond that for quite a distance. Um, you know, I guess that could be a case by case. Uh. I, I don't know. I'm thinking out loud.
I agree with that. It's always subjective to what, to the homeowner's objective, to our objectives. And to the situation. It always depends on the. On that particular situation.
One or two of those big trees, I mean, yeah, but it's when you see, look at Zillow. The, uh, you know, the zoom shots of some of these houses for sale. And it's just, they're surrounded, you know.
What if we put you there as decided? In concert between homeowner and inspector.
Sounds good.
I mean.
The, uh, trimming up to a certain height that prevents in no lateral fuels. There's less risk when that happens than worrying about crown fires coming across. You know, that's.
Yeah, I think that's a subjective. Um.
Yeah.
Just like Brian mentioned earlier, I mean, it's, it's not black and white.
Right. It should be pointed out to the homeowner that having that tree near his house. Is definitely a danger to losing his house, but, um. And, and to move it or cut it down and plant something out away from there further, but. Yeah.
We need a village forester.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah.
Brian?
We talked about that.
We did talk about it and actually I have a contract in with the state right now, so I might, i- i- if it all comes through, I might be doing some of these inspections. Or. You could contract through the state. Um. But as far as that job and employment, that's not. Something I can do right now.
I understand.
I'm happy to help with this committee and we'll see where my role at the state goes.
Well, we're, you know, we're making decisions. That in some ways ought to be made by a trained forester. As opposed to some of us who've read about this a lot.
We're glad to have, uh.
That's why we're really happy you're here.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, so can we move on?
Item two.
Zone two.
They go. Two hundred feet. Ours says sixty feet.
Uh, greater than ten feet up to two hundred feet. Wow, that's a big difference.
More severe, clearly.
Uh, do I? Do we want that?
Well, get it, let's get into the details of that because out two hundred feet, maybe it's not so severe. But, um. I mean, knowing the, the thing that came up to me, uh, is letter E. Um, pine needles and grasses on vacant properties adjacent to residence. And within residential areas shall be removed on a yearly basis. I, I, uh, I don't think you're gonna get people that own vacant lots. That are near other people's homes to clear. Pine needles on a yearly basis.
That, that's a good recommendation, but that should be a requirement.
Right.
Uh, that was E. So a recommendation, shall we word that in such a way that? It is recommended?
Recommended on a yearly basis, but practically. Uh, you're gonna have a hard time with getting people on vacant lots to clear pine needles.
That's not gonna happen, yeah.
Exactly, but so, you know, do we, uh, that, that falls back to, do we wanna make this? An enforceable document or just a suggestive document?
Well, that's the council to decide.
Yeah.
I mean, my opinion is you gotta have some minimum requirements that you can inspect and say they meet. And they comply with. Because we've already talked about and the council's already sort of on board with. A provision that if you meet or comply with, you're gonna get a discount in, in that monthly fee on your water bill.
Yeah.
And so it's something, how about we write that, um, within residential areas is recommended. To be removed on a yearly basis.
Well, then it's not something you can enforce.
No. Well, the, the old, you know, I mean, the standard that. Edgevar has, has a column for required versus recommended, so. If we keep any of the recommendations, just move it over a column.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. I'm just gonna write that in in red and we can discuss it as a committee at some point, okay?
Anybody, uh, I've got, I've got some concerns about letter J. Uh, no firewood stacked within twenty feet of structures unless under approved fire retardant cover. All firewood must comply with the beetle habitat reduction requirements. Contained in subsection and then a number, you know, I don't, we, we don't. Really get into beetle habitat reduction requirements, so.
That doesn't apply.
I would suggest we just remove that.
I agree.
I'm gonna put an X through that, okay?
Yeah.
Again, I'm gonna send this out to everyone, so just. Don't feel like you're not gonna see this.
And then, uh, I, I mean, uh, anybody else with section two or, you know, number two?
Well, how about F? Because the pruning recommendations that I've seen are. Uh, six feet. I usually do eight, but I heard that six feet was because they don't want. You reaching over your head with a chainsaw, so sixty. Was considered adequate trimming in zone two.
Two. Well, you can get a pole saw.
Right.
You can easily reach fifteen feet with a pole saw, so, you know, it's a, that's a matter of just having the right tool. For the job, right?
But they go, uh, within thirty feet of structure, okay, that, that I guess I.
That's about the eve height, isn't it? Ten feet is about eve height almost, I mean.
Yeah, it depends on how tall the tree is too.
And a two, two story versus a one story.
One, one third of the tree depending on the tree height.
And Brian. All the documents that I've seen before, including, uh, ours said. You only take twenty-five percent of the total heights. At least in the first year.
Well, you're taking a lot more than that.
Is that, is that right? Cause this one says you take a third of the height off. A third of the height and limbs off.
Thirty feet or a third of the height with it, whichever is less. Um, yes, and that's where you get into comparing like. Um, more forest health practices against fire mitigation practices, so you have to find that balance in the middle. So what you're reading is probably saying, yeah, you don't wanna. Stress the tree too much, but the tree can live with fifty percent of the bottom being taken off. You just don't wanna do too much.
I would leave it the way it is, I mean.
I, I'm okay with this.
Okay.
Okay, are we down to zone three now?
Yep. I'm good with zone with number two. Anybody else?
And zone two, we agree is up to two hundred feet.
Oh, did we decide we wanted two hundred feet on that?
I don't, I mean, that's. I think, yeah, whether sixty or seventy-five or eight, I mean. I think, whether sixty or seventy-five or eighty, I mean, two hundred is way too far to me, uh, it's my opinion.
There's not really much in there out over sixty feet in the rest of the description. So we could knock that two hundred feet down to a hundred easily.
Okay, I'm gonna put that in red, all right?
I think our lots are two hundred feet. Most lots.
Uh.
I, I cha- I'd mark, um, I marked that one hundred feet in red, all right?
Okay.
The number three? The, uh, I've just got a question as in, uh, in letter C, every effort shall be made to remove and utilize boll wood over six inches in diameter. I've never heard the term boll wood, can you, uh, Mark, do, do you have any?
Do you know what that is? Boll wood?
Um, yeah, that's like the, the naughty kind of stumpy things, like, you know, that have the real naughty like character boll wood. The bowls, it has like, uh, is it be maybe like your pitch pine stumps, the tall ones?
Is this, is this dead?
It's dead usually, or, or, I mean, it can be on a tree, but it's where the, something's happened to them and they get like a character and they, they grow like bowls and oh, people use them for carpentry or arts and crafts and.
I would eliminate that because I don't think it really applies. I mean, maybe it does down there, but I don't.
Yeah.
Not seeing it right, but yeah, I don't understand that as much.
To me, it's a non-issue then.
I lined it up.
Okay. And then the letter D, uh, trim all species to six feet or one-third the height of the tree, whichever is less measuring from the uphill side of the tree. Ensure that shorter tree groups are upwind of taller tree groups. I don't know how you determine upwind, you know, I mean, you, we do have a prevailing wind, but, uh, winds can come, eh, you know, in a, in a storm or a firestorm, it can come from any direction, so, um.
Typically, it, it might mean uphill, but it doesn't have to be uphill.
Yeah, the, the term upwind to me just gets confusing in there.
Okay, shall I put a line through that?
Well.
Are we thinking about?
I guess of prevailing winds.
Prevailing winds?
Usually south and west, but in the summer anyway.
Um, shorter trees are, are. Well, it's there, yeah. Uh, that, that's basically saying that the shorter trees are, if they ignite, they're gonna be behind the taller trees, so they don't serve as ladder fuel.
Uh, I would just suggest we just eliminate that last sentence of letter D.
Cause the uphill makes more sense than the upwind in that situation.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna put a line through that whole sentence. Yes, no?
Yep, I agree. And then, then letter E.
I mean, do we all agree with that, or do we wanna put uphill, uphill instead of upwind?
I think that's pretty hasty.
Okay. All right, I'm just gonna put a line through it.
Well, there's already a, a thing about uphill side, you're measuring from the uphill side and.
Okay, I, I just put a line through the whole.
And then letter E refers to a director of forestry. I don't know, do we wanna rename that? Do we have a, do we have somebody or a title?
Appropriate title. So, but, uh, let's go back, yes, let's, oh, I'm sorry.
Where, where do you wanna go? Brian?
No, go ahead, Scott, I see what he's saying here.
Okay, except when the property has full management plan approved by the council, approved by the village?
Well, it'd be the fire chief, I think, and we keep referring to, it's gonna be.
The captain, yeah, probably, that would probably be a Romo.
Or a designee of the fire chief.
I'd say the wildland coordinator would be the the, the wildland coordinator, that would probably be a possible thing for them now. Cause Chris Romo is, you know, he's certified in firewise and
Yes.
so on and so forth.
I, I have marked, uh, that the wildland coordinator. Okay?
And that's just approved by whoever makes the plan, but he still has to approve it.
Right.
Fire situation.
Uh, letter F, mastication and chipping of slash are allowed for slash disposal. Wood depth shall not exceed two inches. Boll wood over six inches in diameter shall be removed, so I, I'm guessing we remove that last sentence again.
Let me clarify that, so I see what they're using that here, so bowl is, is like the trunk.
Oh.
That, that's what they're using that here is bowl is the trunk, so what they're saying in, in part C, that's basically like what Rick Smith's saying with CWA is they want to try and utilize any lumber or any timber over the six inches in diameter, and they're, they're just describing that as boll wood, which means trunk.
Okay, so bowl is a trunk. How, should we use that word or have a different word, the trunk?
Well, it's hard, yeah, because it's, yeah, it's hard to understand, even had me confused for a second, but, um, bowl, or, or we just have to attach a list of definitions.
Okay, well.
And sometimes that's good, just to have a list of forestry definitions, which I may be able to set them on file.
I just Googled it, says, and it doesn't have bowl, but bollies, is the main stem of a tree usually covered with bark. The bowl is usually the part that is commercially useful for lumber, so not, it's synonyms or tree trunk, a trunk, so.
So shall we just put?
You call it merchanty bull timber, but, but, but bowl wood, or they're saying if it's something that could be utilized as firewood or.
We'll take, we'll take anything bigger than, uh, four inches. So we specify that.
So.
Well, I, I don't really know that that needs to be put into the requirement. Uh, and when somebody comes to, to do this work, they're gonna say, hey, if it's over four inches, we can use it, we're not gonna just chip it up. But there might come a time where, yeah, that, maybe they do need to chip it up or.
You've got those big trees that are over twelve inch diameter base height, and you could define that as boll wood, so I don't.
Shall I just put wood trunks over six inches in diameter shall be removed?
All the big trees have to be removed, huh?
They don't want it laying on the ground, they don't want you to leave.
Well, yeah, I mean, didn't say that.
From the ground, from the ground.
Yeah.
Okay, it, I mean, we can use this.
Removed from the property.
Removed from the property, thank you. Okay, so what I did, I took bowl out because, and we could put it back in if we wanna put it up in definitions.
Yeah.
Or we could just say trunks or wood trunks over six inches in diameter shall be removed from the property.
But the, all the dead and down, I mean, that's sort of a, who cares what size it is, you should remove it down, right?
Right, and it's up to the contractor, whoever's doing the work to retain what's usable in any way.
How about saying usable trunks over six inches in diameter shall be removed?
I don't, I don't think any of it's a requirement.
It's not, I think that's stuff that'll more show up in your practice plan or the prescription, and then that'll be individual to those, you know, that'll be more of a, and in this general requirements, it may not be appropriate where in your practice plan or your, your specific plan for the house, that could be stated in there, you know, to try and encourage your contractor to use utilize the wood over six inches or, or remove it from the property, that'd be more of a prescription thing, I think.
I'll put a line through it.
All right, move on to G. Uh, just at the very end, it refers to director of forestry, I think we determined, uh, a different name. Yeah. And then on to H, greenwood retained for firewood shall be treated for beetle habitat per section, what, I think that needs to be just indicated.
Yeah, they had a real bad outbreak down there years ago, and they get it worse because they're drier and hotter, but a lot of what they'll do is they'll solarize it, where you take any infested beetle wood or any fresh greenwood, cause the is the cutting and the pheromones that attract the beetles and the pests, and so what they'll do is they, they call it solarizing, where they'll wrap it in uh, like a six mil clear plastic and greenhouse it, basically.
Gotcha.
Trench it in around the wood pile and then make a greenhouse effect on the pests that inside, and it also stops it from releasing since from attracting other, uh, cause I think I had a real problem with this about ten years ago with beetles.
I just think that might be overstepping what we were trying to accomplish.
It doesn't apply to us.
By going into that, um, maybe, maybe in ten years we revisit that, so.
We're at the, then to the specifics, yes.
What about I?
I got no, I got no, I, I, I'm all good with everything.
Logically speaking, it says per acre, okay, so you got an acre lot and you got four or five of these greater than twelve inch. Even though they're in this zone of greater than a hundred feet, I guess. Uh, you're gonna have to take out down to three, four or five down to three.
But this is.
Even though they're not touching, even though they're not touching each other or anything else, right?
Tapping dead, yeah.
That's fine, I just, you know, realistically, that's, you know, per acre, so.
Yeah, wildlife.
If you got a one acre house, a one acre lot. It's greater than sixty up to a, what, two hundred feet, is that what we said? No.
Hundred, one hundred.
A hundred out to lot line.
Hundred out, so that's gotta be probably bigger than a acre, right?
But I mean, you're talking about letter I here?
Yes.
No, well, they're talking about standing dead trees.
So that, uh.
So again, that's, to me, a hazardous standing dead, that's a snag. And, uh, ours, ours says over a hundred feet, there should be no more than three snags greater than twelve inches. Thirty feet in height per acre.
That's what they're saying, basically.
Maybe that's the same thing.
It's the same thing.
Pretty much, I mean, these are standing dead trees, you don't need a pile of standing dead trees on your property.
No.
No, that.
You want any standing dead trees, but anyway.
Well, it, it is, that's where the birds, so it is wildlife habitat, and the woods, the forest, we leave one per acre. More or less, and so it's where your red-tailed hawks perch and hunt from. Where your woodpeckers move in and
Got it.
Or your small bird, it's more, it's mostly bird habitat.
Okay, leave it the way.
Yeah, but we do one acre, one tree per acre, but this is you know, this is where your eagles and your hawks will hang out.
That, I've seen that number go as high as four, and I've seen that also say either standing or down. Is there enough habitat value that you could have three standing or three?
Jay has something in there about the.
Where's that?
Uh, five down logs per acre. Maybe retain the wildlife habitat, Jay.
Oh, all right, Jay, I see you.
Yeah, cause that's like squirrels and ground and small things and, and you do want some biomass going back in the ground.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'll run out eventually, eventually.
Yeah, as long as all the limbs are gone, the trunk is not a fire hazard, really.
It's gonna stay on the ground.
Thanks, okay. Uh, all right, move on to four. Uh, the second line.
So in their case, it's greater than two hundred feet, so keep that in mind. Um, the Riodosa plan says second or third, zone three was over two hundred feet.
I think, I think we agreed to mark that down to one hundred.
Yeah, so what, if we gotta interpret their plan which would be, have been more than two hundred feet, right?
Right, we, we just finished zone three, we just finished number three, zone three. Are we going back to?
No, 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 I'm just saying, on their plan, it says from the end of zone two, which is a hundred feet, right?
Right.
Two hundred feet.
Do they add to the?
Ours is zone two is sixty to a hundred, zone three is one hundred plus or one hundred to something else.
Yeah, we're, we're mainly just focusing on Riodosa right now, okay?
But what that's.
This is way out there, this is way out there.
But even if it's at a hundred feet, it's not gonna fall on the structure.
No. Well, okay, let's, let's look at it the way they have it and does it make sense for, you know, beyond very large distance?
Okay, are we on zone four now? Or where are we?
Four, number four, large tracks.
Large tracks.
I mean, I don't really have any issues with, with the way it reads other than they just keep referring to the director of forestry and that we just need to change to
Yeah.
to our, our thing. Anybody else have any issues with number four?
So, in, no, and maybe in our case, it's anything greater than our number four becomes, becomes anything greater than a hundred feet, is that, I mean? No?
Large tracks more than five acres with or without structures is what it says. So what are we saying? Uh, we're saying large tracks. Case by case, I like that.
Ours is real simple, anything greater than a hundred, it's just one, one paragraph. But.
I like this, it says have an open forested appearance. You know, we have almost nineteen acres and that's what we're doing, making an open forested appearance. I, I like this, I like four, I like, just talk about large tracks.
What I kinda read in, as you go down through it, it's, it, this should, shall be done, is recommended, shall. So these are recommendations, right? Or is that, are those requirements?
It says case by case basis approved with the wildland coordinator, so this is a case where Chris Romo would come up, look around, make some recommendations, case by case, here's what you should do, here's what, I don't know that this is, um, I like the way it's written.
I mean, I, it's okay, it's just a matter of does your lot meet the ordinance or not? And do we, and, and is that yes, no question applied to anything greater than?
May, maybe it, uh, maybe it's referring more to the, uh, does your lot, it, after, after it's visited by Chris Romo, he comes up with a plan that will be approved by the village, right? That, that this lot, your five acre lot has to meet these different requirements. And, uh, and that then becomes what, what the property owner has to accomplish.
Yes.
Not so much what the, what the, uh, ordinance says because it refers to it, uh, more of a case by case basis depending on the, the forester or the.
And it makes it very clear, it says where structures are involved, they shall be treated as zones one and two, so our house and our garage are treated just like zones one and two, however, the rest of it is something that Chris would come out and say, here's this, here's that. You know, um, you can't, you can't make requirements on every acre of a twenty acre.
Yeah.
Property.
Yeah, I, I hear you.
Overwhelming, overwhelming for anybody, including the wildland coordinator.
But that's a lot of work, that's, that's a full, like, little forestry plan, a stewardship.
Yeah, that's. Yeah, big lots, you have this, you would think, you know, and.
I like the way it's written here, it, it feels comfortable to me as a property owner.
Keeping, I mean, I know we can't solve this problem right now, but the inspection process. Uh, we have written into this new position, the ambassador coordinator. Um, you know, with training, that they're gonna be doing inspections. And, you know, to get in compliance, to verify, you know, if there is a, an incentive or a benefit. For having a compliant lot, so you get eleven dollars per month reduced in your water bill. Um. You know, are they gonna just, you know, um, inspect up to zone three? And then. If the owner wants to challenge something and, you know, who's gonna do that? Chris, I mean, I guess it assumes that, cause we don't have a forester.
Yeah, Chris said that he has. Letters, like form letters. He, he uses letters to help. People with their insurance rights and so forth. Mike, you're frozen, why are you frozen? Are you still with us?
What kind of labor requirements is it gonna require and can it be done, you know, adequately with integrity by whom? Is a huge issue for the council.
Yes.
Exactly, it is gonna be an issue. And maybe the, uh, especially in the early days, when you can't find somebody. For non-compliance, when it's just gone into effect.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, the, the, uh, the fines in latter years. Could help support that person or persons.
But first, all we're doing is that soft start.
Right.
All who voluntarily want to do the right thing, that's, that's what the council wants first. Is that let's get twenty, twenty-five percent of, of people who want to do it first. And then we, we can start getting a little heavier handed.
Right.
Right now, we can.
Well, they want something approved, it wants, you know, whether modified or updated to Ria Dosa standards, they want that done. I would, my sense is by this summer, you know.
Yeah, once it done, well, I think.
Then, then what is, you know, it goes into that last part of ours about the penalties and incentives. But they're gonna have to address that, they wanna. Approve another person to help this ambassador coordinator, assuming that that's who's gonna do it. Big question.
Yeah, that, those are things that really it isn't our job to even, I mean, that's the council's responsibility. Um, all we're trying to do is provide them with a document. That they can.
Right, and.
Of course, I mean, it's not our case.
Yeah, so when we get down to recommendation stage, that's, that's sort of the. After this, I mean, we could present these thoughts, but do we need?
You're frozen again. Can't hear you.
We lost you, Mike.
Yeah.
Okay, we lost Mike.
Mike, you can talk all you want, we can't hear you.
We lost you there, Mike, now we got you back.
I'm just saying, at the end of the day, whenever the end of the day is.
We lost you again, Mike.
Losing bandwidth.
Sorry.
It was my understanding how they did Ria Doso is they had the forestry and then he had, or they had a. A few, uh, people, like even some, you know, homeowners or volunteers that were then trained. You know, kind of went along to be able to spread it out.
Yeah.
They could also assist in. Those types of, of, uh, recommendations and stuff, or these inspections, I think it is the inspections.
Yeah, so we have that grant to hire, a name grant to hire someone to manage the volunteers for one year. Um, so we, we're in the right direction.
Yeah, should be able to knock out a big chunk of it.
Oh. Um, so. What else are we gonna look at on the Rua Doso? I'm gonna send this out. With the changes that we talked about. And we're gonna look and see how it might fit into our own.
Well, the only thing I've got is once we get to the fired hazard ratings form. Which is on page six.
Yeah.
Of the Ria Doso thing. Um. On that page, the left-hand column, I got no issues with. The right-hand column, you know, we gotta change. Uh, property of Angel Fire, from Ria Doso to Angel Fire. Um, where it says property located in county, I mean, that's, uh, irrelevant.
Yes.
Um, and then down towards the bottom, utilities, electric service. All of ours is underground, so that's a non-issue, uh, in Angel Fire. And see if I got any.
And fire hydrants, five hundred gallon per minute. Unfortunately, we have a lot of upgrade that is necessary. For our hydrants to, uh, meet these requirements.
Yeah.
I think the fire department needs to, to chime in on the water supply issues. Uh, I have no idea what their, what their capacity is. I know it's diminished in some parts of the village. Uh, you know, really good in some, but really bad in others. Um, so, uh, that, the, the water supply issues, I think, uh, the fire department. And they, they have records of, of the good and bad hydrants.
And that is, can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
Now we got you, Mike.
That fire hydrant thing is a. Is on a lot of radar screens, um, for them to fix. So that's really not a requirement, how could it be a requirement of the whole one?
Well, this is just scoring.
Yeah.
Their.
This is a hazard rating.
Yeah, that, you know, if you're near a hydrant, uh, the only hydrants are very poor, you're not gonna get as good a rating.
And that the goal of the village is to bring our rating down from, I think it's five. Five right now.
It's the ISO.
Yeah, the ISO, and like Rua Doso has a two.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, you should say a working fire hydrant, whether this is whatever. We got a lot of fire hydrants, but they don't all, you know, work.
Right, or some work very poorly and others work really great. Uh, so, uh, as far as that's concerned, I, uh, I think the, uh, the fire department should chime in on that.
Yeah, that's not ours.
Or take it out of the ordinance from the standpoint of.
This is a rating, ratings form, that's all it is.
Yeah, this isn't an ordinance.
This isn't the ordinance, this is section forty-two eighty-one, it's just a ratings form. It's, it, this is something the fire department and the council to work on.
It'll then give property owner a better idea where they are. You know, once they comply, once they don't, once the, the first visit. And then where they're at after the visit, you know, once they comply.
This isn't our business.
I mean.
Well, what it does is it, it keeps the, uh, it keeps a record, so, cause like a couple of years ago when the fire happened. It was, it was the feds that take over, right? It's not our local guys doing anything, it's the feds that show up. But we're the liaison to them and we can say, look, this fire hydrant works, this one doesn't.
Yeah.
This fire hydrant is this many gallons or, or, or it's just to have that defense plan.
Yeah, in, in the wildfire.
Infrastructure up to.
In the wildfire protection plan, that's a whole nother initiative to call it that, and a weakness. Uh, I'm sure insurance companies would wanna know that, you know, clearly.
Yeah, I think that. Yeah, this is something that. Council and.
And that comes into infrastructure and there's a lot of questions on that with, uh, which is a total different thing, that's more village of angel fire. Uh, infrastructure concerns.
I think we've done the work that we should be doing.
Okay, I have one question. Are you leaving this? If you had brown separation that they have, are you going?
Uh, we'll, we'll recommend drawings, yes, we, we like, I mean, people react to visual. Descriptions better than worded ones.
I think that helps.
It helps.
It helps describe one of the.
Um, a question about next steps, uh, I'm sorry.
Brown separation.
I, I think it is possible.
It is possible, and they've done it.
It, it, it very much is possible, it, it means taking on more trees.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, many, 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 many.
Right, but that's saying the world we're in now.
Yeah.
Either we do it or the fire does it.
Yeah.
That's it, we do it or the fire does it, and the fire does what he wants anyway.
Okay, those parameters were listed in zones one, two and three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so we, are we gonna address? Uh. Minimum tree found separation based upon slope percent.
Yeah, that was in there too.
Uh, I'm, I'm not versed on that, I got no information to really comment on that. Uh, Brian, you got any comments?
Yes, it does change how your, it affects your fire behavior. But again, I think those are those individual things that can be looked at on a. You know, on a topographic basis, you know, it depends on which house and, but yes, it's very relevant. Um, and it does, the, the slope and, and your hillside does change your fire behavior. So it's good for the individual home to have that assessed and, and this, these are good guides, these are, this is very good information.
Cause I could see it could be based too on what the ground cover is, is it all rock?
Yes.
It, it, is it dirt on the slope? You know, I mean, that, that could come into play too, right?
It's so individual.
Yeah.
Yes, that's that on the ground judgment.
That's something to keep in.
Mm-hmm. But this is great, uh, reference materials.
And so I'm gonna send out some of these things that we discussed in red. And I think we'll probably have to have another work session where we decide how to format it. And make it angel fire, how about that?
Okay, that would be good, the question is, can we, I think we should also have it before the next October. I mean, August meeting, so that we could present something a little more specific. To, I need, the question is, at the August meeting, are we gonna review this second modified document with? As a recommendation and, and try to get a vote on it for the city council.
Well, I think we. We, we don't wanna rush it, I think we could provide at our next meeting. Some of the suggestions we've made. And, um.
When you said.
I, I can pull that over into ours in red. And then we can look at it together, I, can we vote on it? I don't know.
Well, the question is, okay, we come to the August, is it the second, is the first Tuesday of August, I can't remember, but whatever that meeting is.
August, uh.
Point.
August sixth.
Able to discuss. Huh, the sixth?
August the sixth.
And that was at nine o'clock here?
So agenda wise, which I've gotta submit something, you know, week before that, but, you know, we still got plenty of time on that. At what point do you think we would be after we had another work session?
Yeah.
Should we have another work session or should we?
I'm all right, but I'm open next week, I, I, I don't know how long it'll take you to do the changes.
Not, not long.
Okay. Okay, all right, I mean, I, I'm, I'm around, but, uh.
I'm gonna pull all this over and.
So if we had that, whether it be on the twenty-second or the twenty-ninth. Yeah, we still have time to modify that and present to the rest of the committee our thoughts. Is that all we're gonna say?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yes, I think that we could. Modify our angel fire.
Now modify the Ria Doso to fit my angel fire, right?
That's it, I like that.
Yeah.
We'll modify the Rua Doso DSO to fit angel fire. And we'll present it, we could present it at Aug- on the August sixth meeting. And have, if we have a forum, vote to recommend it to council, I think we could do that.
And, I mean, a question.
There'll be another work session that I know of, if people just feed in when I send the email out. If, if everyone just feeds into that, then it, we can bring it to the August sixth meeting.
Yeah.
And if we have a quorum, vote to recommend to council.
Yeah, and. To me, I like the old army principle, the KISS principle, keep it simple, stupid. And to that end, recommendations, to me, they don't have them in the Ria Dosa documents that I can tell. Here are the requirements, black and white. And should we leave that part out to keep it simple, stupid? I think so, but.
Simple, I like Rua Doso gives us a base line.
I, I like where they put a lot of the weight on the inspector. To visit the property and make some, and tweak some things. And then the, the agreed upon. Document that's created between the inspector and the homeowner or property owner. Is then the legal document. Does that sound reasonable?
You don't have to have requirements and recommendations, you have a DSO, that's what Rua Doso does.
And this document gives the inspector some meat to go and do the inspection and say, okay. You know, I need you to cut these trees, and the homeowner says, no, I don't wanna. He says, well, according to the, according to the requirements, or, uh, I have to have you cut those trees. You know? Exactly, and that, so the, it's up to the inspector to utilize the document. To create the document for that property.
And it really has to, all this has to go, I mean, has to be looked at by a legal advisor for.
I, I agree there too.
Yeah, I mean, we can't, the village can't do anything until they have somebody look at it.
Because it's gotta be enforceable.
Well, and that comes with the inspection and the integrity and, and training of the inspector, I guess.
I agree, I agree. Hopefully, we get some good ones that have backbones.
Yeah, if we get an inspector, you ever heard that, you know?
You're right.
If a frog had wings, you know, he wouldn't bump his ass trying to fly, right?
Right.
Well, and you remember the last pages of this document are basically. Construction, uh, requirements in terms of.
New builds and stuff.
New builds, the electrical power, the siding, decking.
That's not our thing, material.
A lot of those are recommendations.
Recommendations for, yeah, for firewise, that's, that all falls into your firewise stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, that's. Document perhaps, or it's something that the inspector can give recommendations after the inspection.
Good, from the internet.
And, and maybe some of that take is taken out of this document and put into the building codes.
Exactly.
Mm-hmm.
Well, in, in the next meeting, the work session, we need to address, you know. That building code, that, does this constitute a requirement to build?
But we don't get involved with building codes, that's not this committee's job, to get involved with building codes. All we're doing is looking at defensible space, that's it.
We, we have a gentleman waiting to make a comment here.
Thank you, Chairman, uh, just with your conversations of what you've just stated about preferred recommendations for structures at the time of construction. We do have codes in the village, they're not building codes, but there's supplemental rec- rec. Regulations on different things, like if you're gonna have a sign, it's gotta be a wooden frame, it can't be a T-post, that kind of stuff. So if there are elements that you feel don't fit in this ordinance, but could go in a different ordinance, by all means, still write them down. So if there are elements that you feel don't fit in this ordinance, but could go in a different ordinance, by all means, still write them down. We can find a way to put it in if it's, if it all goes together, you know, so we are looking at other parts of the code. I don't want you to feel like, well, this is a pretty, this is irrelevant, just like the hydrants conversation.
Yeah.
So the hydrants conversation is still important from an infrastructure standpoint for the village. Uh, cause some hydrants are being served off two-inch mains, which means they have no good pressure. But if we've got goals and objectives as a village to replace the mains and, and enhance our hydrant inventory. Please put that down so that there's another voice that makes the argument that this needs to be put in other sections of the code. So. I like your conversations and what you've had so far about hydrants and building codes, but don't feel that. Just because it doesn't fit neatly in this committee doesn't mean it should be ignored.
We can still voice, uh.
Absolutely.
Cause you want voices.
That's exactly right. So if we're gonna be looking at changing other sections of our code so that everything fits together and runs smoothly.
Right, right.
Then we need to know that. So that's all I wanna add.
To, to add to that, you know, when you're selling your house, I think there needs to be something, you know, that you need to meet the code. But that's another discussion too. It's kinda like when you build a home or you sell a home, those two points in time. Is when you really have teeth in terms of enforcement, in my opinion.
And like Rocky said over and over, so much is going on and it needs to happen. It needs to thread together and.
This document was.
Oh, I.
To us by, uh.
Uh, Chief Bobic.
Chief Bobic, Bobic. This, this encompasses everything. Building codes. Have you, have you seen this document?
I, I have not and there's, there's two things I need to bring to your attention. That item is, if you look on the front page, it's prepared by the International. Code Council and they do all building codes, electrical codes, fire codes, all of that. We do not have a building inspector in Angel Fire. We haven't had a building inspector in years. If we had a building inspector, they could utilize all those codes. On all their inspections. We don't have that. All of our inspections are done by the state of New Mexico with Construction Industries Division. So all the construction aspects have to comply with their codes, which I believe is the twenty-twenty-one building code. I think they've just updated to that, but I don't believe it incorporates that section of the code too. So. Uh, I don't wanna discredit that. That's an important document and if there are some sections we could put as a supplemental regulation. For what we can do on our reviews, I think that's fine. But, uh, that document really ties into building codes, plumbing codes, electrical codes, cause it's done by the entity that creates all of them. We haven't had a building official for quite some time and, um. Until such time, we're, it defaults to the state.
Okay.
Um, happy to look to see if there's any recommendations that we might be able to put as a supplemental. But we can't, we can't adopt that wholeheartedly because we don't, we don't have our own inspectors to do that.
Yeah, we, we figured that out when we tried to use it before.
The appeal of this was it's already stood legal test.
Yes, yes.
And so it's, you know, it's harder to challenge to base. The local on this code.
That's correct. And each municipality still has the ability to make amendments to that code to. Try to customize it to the municipality if needed, uh. But we really can't use it as a template because we don't have any inspectors to, to do that, so.
And I, I think a lot of what we've read in there, we find in the Ruidoso. It's very similar. It's very similar. So.
Don't wanna interrupt. You guys are working hard.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, so are we going to have another work session before the meeting on August the sixth or are we going to?
I would agree. The question is, what can people do?
Scott?
Well, I, I mean, I'm all for getting the revised. Version that, that you're gonna do.
Okay.
And then read through it and see, I, I guess I didn't, I didn't go after this to be a final. But we could actually review that version if you email it out. You know, and if we see there's a lot of discussions, then let's try to work in a work session.
Yes.
In the meantime, in the meantime, we'll reach out to Dick Cook at Ria Dosa to ask those two questions.
We have to, we, when we, uh, plan a work session, we have to have seventy-two hours of notice to the public, so.
And I, and I don't know how fast you can get that done. I'm not trying to put pressure on you, but if we can, I know, I know, right? You know.
I could get it done.
The, uh.
So, I like Scott's recommendation that first I send this out, then we decide, do we need another work session? Or are we ready to bring this to a regular meeting on August the sixth?
And it's true.
And, um.
Another session. Uh, that's my opinion. The question is, how far, because we're not gonna put the, the, the content of this into the minutes. It's just gonna say. Work session results from review of defensible space ordinance.
Well, let, let's, let's schedule a work session and if we decide, in the meantime, it can be canceled, we'll cancel it.
Well, you, you'd take several days to schedule, so I think we ought to go ahead and vividate.
That's what he said and.
Yeah. Let's just schedule one and then, uh, and then we'll go, well, uh, if we need to cancel it, we can, but we'll have it scheduled.
Right.
We would recommend the twenty-second or the twenty-third. That's a Monday or a Tuesday.
I can't do the twenty-third for sure.
I cannot do the twenty-fourth.
Uh, I've got a CWA meeting on the twenty-fourth.
What about the twenty-second?
The twenty-second's okay with me.
Good.
Uh, Dave?
Uh, twenty-second looks okay.
Okay, twenty-second, nine to eleven, and you know, um. Dennis needs. A min- minutes.
Okay, Dennis has gotta reserve the room.
Without some kind of minutes.
Uh, I'll send out, uh, thing to Dennis and we need to notify the others on the committee that they can attend, obviously. We have a, we have some heartburn with, uh, Mark Manley.
I know, he's not.
Um, let me call him to see if he's available for whatever date we choose.
All right, twenty-second is what works for those who are present here right now.
Okay.
The twenty-third doesn't work, the twenty-fourth, the twenty-fifth, uh, those don't work.
Twenty-fifth works for me, but.
Doesn't work for me.
Okay. So it's.
Yeah. I'm still in a meeting. Yeah, let me call you later. I'm on a meeting. Okay, got it, got it, got it. Okay. I think that's good.
I'd like it. Thanks, guys. Don, you're okay for the twenty-second?
Sure, I'm okay.
Good, good. Okay, that's what we're trying for. Uh, Brian, can you be with us?
Yes, I can plan on that, I believe.
Great. Thanks for your input today, Brian.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you.
Well, maybe we'll have. Maybe they can come.
Well, I think we have to face the reality.
Yeah.
That the village. Will, will want to do this, um, the resort. Because it's gonna be very expensive for the resort, the re- resort will not wanna do.
The truth is that Mark's, Mark is not my asking of forward.
No.
He does not.
That the resort over.